Okay. Good evening, everybody. I don't have to bang it too loud because there's not too many people here tonight. Sometimes there's a big crowd and I have to really give it a... Welcome to Springfield City Hall. Today is Monday, November 17th. The council has a regularly scheduled meeting set to take place at 7:00. The time is 6:48. We have three people registered for public speak-out tonight, one of whom has withdrawn. So we have two speakers tonight, Mr. Reverend Will Naylor and then Mr. Howard. So each be allotted the three minutes. And Mr. Naylor, at this time, we'd invite you to come forward and address the council.
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I'm obliged to extend my deepest gratitude to my lovely wife, Teresa Naylor, my family, my friends, and every person who believed in me and supported my candidacy for Springfield City Council Ward Four. My opponent did not mop the floor with me. We ran a competitive and formidable, respectable race. And to all who sacrificed your time, energy, and resources, I sincerely thank you. This campaign has always been about the people, and I humbly recognize that this is the people's seat, and the people have decided. To God be the glory. I extend heartfelt congratulations to Councilor Marlo Brown on his victory. It is my earnest prayer that he will work diligently to address the disenfranchisement of our community, the disinvestment along the State Street Quarter, and the many challenges facing our residents, especially those battling addiction, mental health issues, and chronic homelessness. I also hope that the incoming city council will stand strong for our seniors by addressing the tax burden that weighs heavily upon them and that ever so, by all means, please, replace the light at State and Catherine Street that's been out for far too long. That's just disrespectful, and it needs to be changed. I'll get up there and change the light bulb if I have to. Please hold them accountable to their contractual obligations. Our young people need greater opportunities, more affordable housing, and real rent stabilization to ease the struggles of working families. Let us continue to fight against food apartheid and push for economic development that uplifts every corner of Springfield. Congratulations to all who will serve. May you lead with fairness, compassion, and integrity. Together, we can make Springfield greater for all with all humility. Willie James Naylor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Reverend Naylor. Counsel Walsh?
I researched that, Councilwoman Walsh, and there is no number. It's just pitiful. It's pathetic. They don't even have enough in them to have a number on the streetlight, and it's been out for almost a year. It's a dark corner, and there was a fatality over there several years ago, Mr. President, and it's very disrespectful to our community. I just don't see what the problem is. How come someone can't just go up there and change a light bulb? If you give me a ladder, prop it up there, I'd get up there and change it myself, Councilwoman Walsh. If you hold the ladder for me, we can get it done. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Reverend Naylor.
Thank you.
Okay. Our next speaker is Mr. Stephen Howard. Mr. Howard?
Thank you, President Fenton, for recognizing me, and good evening, everyone. My request is that, second time, I'm asking for this body, for African Studies in the Springfield school system, to be expanded, to be more inclusive of African Studies, not just limited to the beginning with the enslavement of the African people, but to also include the ancient history of Kemet and Egypt, Ethiopia. Egyptian hieroglyphs are the oldest known form of African script. The term hieroglyph means sacred carving in Greek, and the script was inscribed on monuments, tombs, and papyrus scrolls. The ability to read these hieroglyphs was deciphered in the 19th century using the Rosetta Stone, which provided a key to decode through its text in hieroglyphs, popular script, and ancient Greek. Egyptian artifacts adorn European museums and libraries and are usually the largest collections in these institutions. Are Springfield students taught this in public schools? European architecture is influenced by the ancient Egyptians, who are Africans. Today's graffiti is the rebirth of the African art known as Egyptian hieroglyphs. Are Springfield students taught this in our educational system? Or is that just too woke, too diverse, too equitable, or even too inclusionary? Why are libraries around this nation being prohibited to include books, histories, and other forms of knowledge, which represent the diversity of this planet's population? After all, we are humans, aren't we? Why are librarians under threats of losing their careers simply by allowing these histories to remain in their collections, while the museums and libraries, such as the British Museum, the Metropolitan Museum in New York City, and the French Museum, display these thousands of years of, you know, gold and precious... I mean, these artifacts are made of gold and precious artifacts, stones and so forth. Why must our brilliant young minds wait until they are in tertiary schools or higher education, such as colleges and universities, to be taught these great ancient African societies, which Europe and the rest of the world have learned from and are the beneficiaries of? President Fenton, when was the first time that you and people in this chamber, or even watching on Focus Springfield, first learned of these magnificent histories, and how did this knowledge affect you? So why keep it from our youth?
Mr. Howard, if it's okay, we can give you another three minutes. We've got time tonight.
Thank you. So why keep it from our youth? Won't you like your offspring or to know of your cultural heritage regardless of what your ancestry is? I'm raising this issue, President Fenton, because of my respect for this magnificent institution, and since I'm one lone voice, not crying in the wilderness, but speaking truth to power, I would like to maybe bring this to your attention before reaching out to the school committee or the superintendent of schools, because I'm hoping to build strong support, so when I go to them, they would at least know that I'm not doing this on my own and have some support. I'm hoping that this institution, which represents the residents of the city of Springfield, can use its influence to ensure that the histories, some of which I've mentioned here, be included or expanded in Springfield's curricula, beginning from pre-K through high school, following already established curricula and accreditations. Thank you, President Fenton, for allowing me, Stephen Howard, these few minutes to speak out. And may the rest of 2025 prove to be everyone's greatest experiences this year. Thank you again for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. That'll conclude our public speak-out this evening. Council will stand in recess for three minutes and reconvene on the meeting link for the 7:00 o'clock meeting. All right, George, let me know when we're ready here. Thank you. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Springfield City Hall. Today is Monday, November 17th. The time is 7:00 PM. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Springfield City Council. We're going to call this meeting to order. Will the council and our guests please rise for a moment of silence? Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll? I did hear from Counselor Govan that she's traveling and will not be able to be with us tonight, and Counselor Allen is going to try to be with us, but his granddaughter's playing in, I think, a state championship soccer game tonight. Madam Clerk.
Counselor Kern?
Present.
Present, Counselor Allen. Absent, Counselor Govan. Absent, Counselor Walsh.
Present.
Present, Counselor Edwards. Present, Counselor Davila.
Present.
Present, Counselor Brown.
Present.
Present, Counselor Whitfield.
Present.
Present, Counselor Delgado.
Present.
Present, Counselor Santinello. Absent, Counselor Click Bruce.
Present.
Present, Counselor Perez.
Present.
Present, Counselor Fenton.
Present. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Okay, first item, are there any reports of committee? Counsel Walsh?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've reported the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee of the Springfield City Council met prior to our meeting to discuss 12 items on tonight's agenda. In attendance were Councillors Cateri Walsh and Jose Delgado, members of the Finance Committee, and City Councilor Vice President Tracy Whitfield. Representatives from Finance, Comptrollers, Treasurers, Police, Parks, School Department, and DPW were present. Counsel Delgado made a motion to refer 11 items for approval.
Any other reports of committee this evening? Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening to all. Mr. President, the General Government Committee met on November 12. We met twice. The first was regarding confirmation of Geraldine McCarthy to the mobile home control and confirmation of Kevin Coffey to the historical commission, and that will be elevated to this body at an appropriate time. Also, we met subsequently in the same day on the food truck ordinance, which is on the agenda for today. It is a very lengthy proposal, and we will be hearing about that later on today as well. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Any other councillors with committee reports? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on acceptance of the reports.
On acceptance, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen. Absent, Counsel Govan. Absent, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Edwards? Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello. Absent, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez? Yes, Counsel Fenton.
Yes, more insufficient. Committee reports are accepted. Item number one, Madam Clerk.
Item one is an order authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed for the sale of the north side of Taylor Street for $734.
Councillors, I apologize. This one's a little out of order, but we put it on the agenda this way, so we will hear it first. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, councillors. Julissa Davila Ramos for the Treasurer's Office. I'm presenting on North Side Tyler Street, Parcel 21. It's an approximately 7,300-square-foot lot in the Old Hill neighborhood, just shy of 50 feet of frontage. The Treasurer's Office sent out a butterlot solicitation to all four abutters and received proposals from two. The committee selected Billy Joe Spears, a direct adjacent abutter, proposing use as a side yard. Do you have any questions?
Any questions from the council regarding the petition? Okay. Counsel Kern?
What is that parcel assessed at?
I do not have that information with me. Give me one second. It should actually be on the memo that Attorney Melvin Altman provided in the packet, so it should be in the memo that you guys received. I don't have it in front of me, unfortunately.
Trying to see if I can pull it up for you here.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that.
Assess value $25,700. Anything else? Okay. Any other councillors? Questions on the order? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen. Absent, Counsel Govan. Absent, Counsel Walsh. Yes, Counsel Edwards? Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello. Absent, Counsel?
Yes.
Present and yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez? Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Order is approved. Thank you. Item number two, Madam Clerk.
Item number two is the September Revenue versus Expenditure Report.
Okay, Mr. Burns, welcome back. Patrick Burns. Patrick Burns, everybody. Hi, Pat.
Thank you, Mr. President.
I don't know. Wait, 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 wait. How long have you been doing this, Pat? Have you ever gotten an ovation when you were coming up to present the September Expenditure and Revenues Report?
Just when I was leaving.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I'm presenting the September Revenue versus Expenditure Report. This represents 25% of the fiscal year. General fund revenue for through the first three months of the fiscal year totaled $270.2 million, or 27% of budget. General fund expenditures through the same period totaled $358.5 million, or 35% of budget.
Thank you, Mr. Burns. Any questions for Patrick? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the report.
On acceptance, Counsel Kern? Yes, Counsel Allen. Absent, Counsel Govan. Absent, Counsel Walsh. Yes, Counsel Edwards? Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez? Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Report is accepted. Thank you, Mr. Burns. Okay, Madam Clerk, items three through six, please, are all under our threshold.
Item three is an AH-026 grant for $20,000. Four is FY-26 Council on Aging Grant Increase, No Match Required, in the amount of $30,561. Item five is an FY-26 Shine Grant Increase, No Match Required, in the amount of $57,342.13. And item six is an FY-26 GGCP Grant in the amount of $100,000, No Match Required.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Please call the roll.
On approval, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen and Govan. Absent, Counsel Walsh. Yes, Counsel Edwards? Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado? Away, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Perez? Yes, Counsel Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient. Grants are approved. Item number seven?
Item seven is an FY-26 Chapter 90 Fair Share Supplemental Appropriation, in the amount of $1,302,093.35.
Mr. Signoli?
I was just waiting for the applause.
If you leave and come back. Oh, Chris.
Oh, I'm not believing any one of you on that one. Good evening, councillors. Chris Signoli, DPW Director. The DPW has been awarded $1.3 million from MassDOT. It is from the Fair Share Amendment, otherwise known as the Millionaire's Tax in the state of Massachusetts. This is the third year that we're receiving it. It goes into our Chapter 90 allotment. A question was asked at the subcommittee meeting as to what we've received before. In Fiscal '24, we received $1.6 million, $100 million statewide. In Fiscal '25, it was $45 million statewide, $807,000 for the city of Springfield, and this year was $80 million, 4.5. When we receive our full Chapter 90 allotment in February, I'll be coming before the council to accept that, and we will be putting together our street list once we know that those dollars are in our account. But the appropriation right now is for $1.3 million added to the account.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli. Any councillors with questions or comments? Counsel Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, is there like a priorities list that we can get ahead of time for the streets?
Yes, I'm hesitating for a second because we are just finishing up with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission on doing a complete re-ranking of our streets, so they're going to have them all indexed for us, and I'm probably going to have that in the next six weeks or so. So once I have that, I'll be able to look at that list, and I'll be able to share, obviously, share it with the council. It'll be a big... They're going to be ranking all the streets in the city for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Whitfield. Counsel Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, Chris. That was kind of my question. So this one is going to go directly into street improvements?
Yes, it goes into our Chapter 90 accounts, so it has all the requirements and restrictions, and we will basically be using for roadway improvements paving for calendar year '26, or fiscal year, excuse me, fiscal year '27.
But no sidewalks?
No sidewalks, other than as part of roadways that we are working on. The money cannot be used for sidewalks outside of paving projects.
Right, okay. And so, speaking of the priority list, I recall you giving us a list, I believe, over the summer, an extensive list. Is that a list of the roads, pavement that was going to be done on the roads? Has that been completed, or I'm going to use part of this money into that list?
The paving project for this year, which we started in June, is probably about 60% complete, and we will be shutting down for the winter in the next two, three weeks, and then we will have the remainder of the work in the spring. And our plan is to go out to bid with our roadway work in April of every, or excuse me, in March and April, so that we can start in May with the new contract and overlap it. But the roadways that we presented to you, I believe in March of this year or April, whenever we did the approval, those are the ones that are being paved right now.
So none of this money is going to go towards those projects? This is going to be a whole different list?
No, this is going to be a whole brand-new list, yes.
And did you say who's going to be prioritizing the streets for us, the state?
The Pioneer Valley Planning Commission. Yeah, we hired them to do a full external ranking of our streets based upon the information that we had, and they had received a grant from the state, so we were able to get it at a very, very good deal to allow them to do it, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Chris. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Davila. Counsel Brown?
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a great project, Chris. I just... I'm sure my colleagues and everyone knows what I'm about to say. The streets, the sign, Chris, it's kind of hard for me to keep approving things when there's individuals in my area where we approved for things two years ago, and I've been working for two years to get a sign in front of a person's business where we put it the wrong place, just moving it up nine feet. It's been two and a half years. Every city council meeting, last one I talked to Hector, it still has not gotten done. If it was somewhere else and somewhere, someone else, it would have been done by now. I'm just curious, Chris, when am I going to be able to tell the patriot who's in our, who's been doing business in our area, that they're going to, the city is going to be able to take care of that particular project? When can I tell them that, Chris?
We had told that business owner a couple of years ago that they have to submit a petition. I just can't move signs. That's parking or no parking. We needed to get a petition, and I've never been contacted for that.
No, 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 Chris, you must be misinformed. The city had already, we came in front of the city council. We agreed on it. We said that it was supposed to be done. It's two years ago. It's already been two years ago. So it's no petitions involved. It's already been approved by the city council, and all it is, a matter of when we put it down there, we put it right in front of the petitioner's garage. We didn't put it the right way. And I've been asking, and the petitioner's been asking for the last two and a half years for it to be moved up, and I haven't got any results yet. I've been asking for the last two and a half years.
The location, as far as everything that I know, the location where those signs are right now is where the petition was requested a couple of years ago when the Knox Building was put in.
No.
Yes, that's, I've never received anything else to have that moved other than verbal requests, because it is where it is supposed to go.
Personally, I can get, I can show you the email that I had sent from Sean, from the city council, to you. I can show you the actual information that I sent to Hector Valasquez. For the, I do have a paper trail, so this is something, this is something I've been dealing with for two years. So I'll talk to you, maybe I can talk to you after, I'll talk to you after, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
That's fine, yes.
If you can contact me tomorrow, please. But until I start, until I can get things that we promised in my area, two and a half years resolved, if we can't get this resolved from this point on, I'm not, I want this done first before I start okaying and moving on to other people. This was promised in my area to a person in my area, and it's been a piss-poor effort from getting results done for him. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Brown. Any other councillors on the petitions? Okay. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Counsel Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Allen. Absent, Counsel Walsh. I mean, Govan absent, Counsel Walsh. Yes, Counsel Edwards? Yes, Counsel Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, bond is approved.
Thank you, councillors.
Item number nine, Madam Clerk?
Item number eight is-
Oh, sorry, number eight, number eight.
Item eight is a bond authorization for body worn cameras and tasers in the amount of 2.5 million dollars.
Ms. Bono?
Good evening, councillors. This was a bond you probably looks familiar, that the council approved on February 10th of 2025. It was an error on my part, this, in order to pass a bond, it should be in our capital, our capital improvement plan, that, and it was not in our FY25 capital improvement plan. It was added in March of the FY26, so it was an error on our part. It needs to be in that plan, so our bond council is requesting that you reapprove it. It was part of the big package that we did for the cameras and tasers, and I apologize, I have a big sticky on my computer now that I won't forget the next time.
Any questions or comments from the council? Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy, is this part of the, I think it was 8 million dollars that we approved?
It was, I think it was about 7.2, and there was Free Cash, Pago, the Police General Fund, and then the police had other funding available in their donation accounts that they contributed to the overall cost.
If I recall correctly, that was for tasers-
And body worn cameras.
And body cams. And so, you're saying that these 2.5 million dollars, you mistakenly did, what would it?
It did not, it was not part of, every March, we do a capital improvement plan, and any capital projects, we meet with all departments, and it's part of the plan. This actually came about in between the time period that we had to renew the plan the following March. It was our error, we should have had it in the plan. So, we put it in the plan, and the bond council asked us to get reapproved by the city council.
Right, my final question is, Kathy, so has this bond been put out already, or not yet?
We, no, we haven't issued debt, and they haven't expended any money on the bond yet, no. We required that they used all the other funding before they used the bond funds, because that's actually debt we'd have to issue through the city, and that would cost us money.
And do you think, do you know when we're going to be doing that, issuing that debt?
In about a year, I'd say.
In about a year, okay. All right, thank you, Kathy. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Davila. Any other councillors on the reissuance of the bond? Councillor Santinello?
Yeah, Kathy, just a question. So, this money is for the tasers and the body cameras?
Yes.
And the cost is how much, two and a half, how much?
This bond was for two and a half million, but the whole package was about 7.2 million. It used money from Free Cash, there was a whole package I put together, Free Cash, Pago, the Police General Fund, and then the police had two other funds, they contributed from their donation accounts.
So, these tasers and body cameras haven't been bought yet, correct?
Yes, no, they have them. There was just a funding package that we have to pay over a five-year period. I think it's a five-year period.
All right, so do you happen to have a breakdown as to how much we pay for each camera?
I don't have that with me, councillor, I don't know how much we pay for each camera. I can get that to you.
Can you get that information?
Yeah, I can get that.
Can you get that to me, and also how much for the tasers?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Santinello. Any other councillors on the bond reauthorization? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Councillor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Councillors Allen and Govan, absent, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, bond is authorized. Item number nine?
Item nine is a PEG Access Grant and Cable Related Fund for FY26, Quarter Two Appropriation, in the amount of $124,152.77.
Ms. Bono?
This is me again. This is our quarterly payment from Comcast, and these funds come to the city, and then we then give these funds to Focus Springfield for the services they give the city, for example, this meeting. You asked last time, and yes, it has been going down. The difference between the '24 to the '25 payments have actually went down 84,000, and we have gone down again from our first and second quarter in '25 to '26. So, those funds have been going down.
Councillor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kathy, funds are going down for Focus Springfield, but we still expect the same level of service, and it's also my understanding that they may have to leave the location over on MGM. And if it's my understanding, they were supposed to get $350,000 to go towards renovating a new building. Is all that still in place, and also, what do we do to supplement Focus when these funds go down?
So, the funds have been going down, as far as, it's my understanding, they've already relocated into their new building. But I have asked the head of Focus Springfield and their board for financials for the past year, given the fact that they did make a comment, and I think it was when Councillor Fenton was meeting with them a lot, and we had some issues with the acoustics, that they might eventually have to reach out to the city for a subsidy, and I have been trying to get information from them for the past year, and have not been able to get that. So, it is, it is a concern for me, because we do need those services, but I don't seem to be able to get any information from Focus Springfield.
I don't think they moved yet, but as far as the $350,000 that they were supposed to get to help with relocating?
I am not aware that they have gotten it, and I have asked for the agreement, or some type of paperwork that showed that, and I have not been able to get that either.
Okay, so, is the funding still there for them?
I don't know that. It wasn't through the city.
It wasn't through the city?
The city-
I think it was like ARPA funds or something?
No.
No? All right, I'll talk to you offline about it.
So, yeah, so I, you know, maybe together we can get some information.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor.
Thank you, Councillor Whitfield. Any other councillors on the PEG grant? Okay, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Councillor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Councillors Allen and Govan, absent, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Perez? Yes, Councillor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, order is approved. Item number 10?
Item 10 is the School Department Supplemental Budget Increase and Charter Tuition State Aid.
Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? This is School Department Supplemental Budget for Increase in Charter Tuition and State Aid. Mr. Burns?
Good evening. This is a order we need to have passed to balance our budget with the state aid that was given for charter tuition. It's a small amount, I believe it's $7,190.
Money coming to us?
Yes.
Okay, any questions from the council? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Councillor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Councillors Allen and Govan, absent, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Perez? Yes, Councillor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, order is approved. Item number 11, Madam Clerk?
Item 11 is an order authorizing a contract over three years for the lease purchase of financing of school department computers.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. President. Bob St. Lawrence, Chief Information Officer for Springfield Public Schools. Good evening, councillors. This is the annual request that we bring forward to you each year, and we've appreciated your support on it for our four-year device purchase. This ensures the implementation of staff and student computer replacement devices, the policies that have been approved by the Springfield School Committee in December of 2013, and this policy ensures that the replacement of laptop computers every four years gets our students ready for 21st century skills and post-secondary success. So, we would appreciate your support once again this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. St. Lawrence. Any questions from the councillor, comments? Councillor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. It was good to see you. Just some quick questions. These are for laptops, right, or just all computers?
Correct, this is for staff and student laptops.
Okay, and what company are we contracting with again?
We currently do our device providers through the Wally Computer Associates.
Who?
Wally Computer Associates.
I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
Wally Computer Associates, yes. The current manufacturer that we are purchasing is Hewlett Packard.
Okay. Okay, and how much money is this, we're talking about?
Our current budget projections are around 5 million.
5 billion?
Yes, and I think the rough total from last year was somewhere around 7200 devices. And again, that's part of a four-year refresh, so we're replacing about a quarter of the fleet annually.
So, that's 5 million for three years?
Every four years.
This is here, three?
Yes, this is a request to have the contract for over three years, so that we can align to the four-year policy.
And your calculations, how much money are we saving by doing it this way?
I think we're saving significant money. We are doing bulk purchasing, so obviously, purchasing, you know, any amount less than that, we think we're getting a good value.
Okay, if you get a chance, I would love to have just an idea how much money we're saving.
Sure.
Because I know every year we do this, and I just never feel like I know exactly how much money we're saving.
Absolutely, we think the bulk purchasing is absolutely saving us money. We have a lot of external factors that we're contending with. Last year, I think we talked about the tariff impact, and so we were navigating that. Obviously, the tech companies, you know, these prices are typically increasing, so we're fighting those kind of market forces, but obviously, bulk purchases gives us an edge.
All right, thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councillor Davila. Councillor Delgado?
Just had a quick question. I believe this was asked before, but I don't remember the answer. What do we do with the computers that are not in use? The ones that are, you're retiring?
So, part of our strategy is that we own these devices after four years, and we really take a lot of pride in extending the life beyond the four years. It really gives us an edge if we have to have, you know, like a damaged device, we have to bring that in for repair, we can swap it and get another one in the student's hands without any delay and impacting education. So, we really try to extend the life well beyond the four years into the five and six years period, but after that, we do have a recycling program that we engage in to retire the devices.
I'm just curious to learn more about what we do there. And you're saying we go through Wally Computer Associates, and so, because we go through them, we get a better deal versus going directly to, what was it, Hewlett Packard?
Well, yes, so basically, we're leveraging state contract efficiencies to work on those procurement.
So, they're a state contractor?
Absolutely.
Now it makes sense for me, thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Delgado. Any other councillors? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On approval, Councillor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Councillors Allen and Govan, absent, Councillor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Santinello?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Councillor Fenton?
Yes, more than sufficient, order is approved. Item number 12?
Item 12 is an order authorizing a contract term over three years for cybersecurity firewall for school.
Mr. St. Lawrence?
Thank you again, councillors. So, similar to our four-year life cycle duration for the laptops, our life cycle for the network firewall appliance is for five years. And I said earlier in the subcommittee that one of the driving factors here is cost savings. And so, by ensuring that we have the software and services and support for the firewall over the five-year period, we're estimating $30,000 annually in the first three years of savings, and we actually anticipate a significant amount beyond that, partially because as the device gets older, the software and support becomes more expensive. So, by buying all of the software and support for the five-year period upfront, we get a significant savings. So, I do have those numbers in front of me here. With that said, we know the cybersecurity landscape is dynamic, and we need a strong firewall in place to secure our digital assets and all of our data, and so we'd appreciate your support on this initiative as well.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the council? Councillor Santinello?
Yeah, just a question, have we ever been hacked?
There was a cyber incident, I believe, back in 2020, but not since then.
And what was that incident?
The school department, we dealt with a ransomware incident.
And did we pay the ransom?
We did not. We did an aggressive restore process and handled it internally, and I'm very proud that our team reported only one day of downtime total during that incident. And we learned a lot during that, and we've bolstered our cyber defenses since then. That includes the acquisition of this firewall in particular and other strong cybersecurity measures, and I know there's going to be a subset of us talking about this in school, sorry, in subcommittee tomorrow.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councillor Santinello. Councillor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Is the school department aware of or eligible to apply for the cybersecurity grant that the state puts out?
Absolutely, I'm really happy you mentioned that, because the firewall is only one element of a cybersecurity posture, and we take pride in taking several different approaches, multi-pronged approach, and obviously, the municipal cybersecurity awareness grant is something that we apply for. We go through the phishing activities, and we have a number of training materials available to our staff, and we're, I think will be our third annual application for that particular program this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kern?
How much is this contract for, sir, for the cybersecurity?
My apologies, I have the numbers in front of me. We are anticipating, and so we're in the middle of some negotiations with some of the vendors that are on state contract, but we're anticipating somewhere in the neighborhood of $438,000 to $450,000 for this five-year purchase.
And who maintains that currently? Who has that contract currently?
So, again, this is very similar to the laptop purchase, so the top vendors, you may know the names, Palo Alto, Cisco, these are the top providers in next-generation firewalls, and so we purchase off of state contract for the device, and it works very similar to the laptop purchase. Again, this, I believe, is also, this one in particular is going through Custom Computer Associates.
And just one final question. When you go through the state contract, go back to the laptops that we just voted on, how does that make it cheaper, rather than just go straight to Hewlett Packard with an straight to Hewlett-Packard with an order like $5 million?
Yes, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not exactly sure if we can purchase direct in all cases. I know the state negotiates very strict terms that really helps both, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we're able to leverage those efficiencies.
So what does Wally get out of that? So it's $5 million for the computers, but Wally's is a vendor. What is the commission?
I don't have that in front of me.
Thank you, Counselor Kern. Any other counselors? Okay, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on item number 12.
On approval, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselors Allen and Goban absent. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella? Away, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient? Order is approved. Okay, item number 13. Madam Clerk?
Item number 13 is amending... Excuse me, amending Chapter 275, Article 4, which is the revised ordinances of 1986. And it is prohibiting the manufacture, sale, and distribution of THC and synthetic THC products.
Okay. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter this evening? Who's the petitioner in this case, Madam Clerk? Okay. Is there anyone would like to make a motion to continue to our next meeting?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Counselor Walsh, seconded by Counselor Whitfield. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
On the motion, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen and Goban absent. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Away, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient? Matters continue to our next meeting. Item number 14?
Item 14 is amending ordinance, Chapter 245, Article 2, which is...
Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? Is this petitioner also the Law Department, Madam Clerk?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a motion to continue?
Some.
Motion made by Counselor Whitfield, seconded by Counselor Delgado. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
On the motion, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen and Counselor Goban absent. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Away, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient? Item is continued to our next meeting. Item number 15?
Item 15 is amending Chapter 279, Peddling and Soliciting.
Mr. Signoli?
Good evening, counselors. Excuse me. A number of years ago, I believe it was Counselors Williams and Gomez, we put together regulations with regard to mobile food trucks in the city of Springfield within the public way. It was never turned into an ordinance, and over the last couple of years, there have been issues with food trucks in the city of Springfield on private property where there are no regulations that exist whatsoever overseeing food trucks. Earlier this year, Counselor Allen and virtually every department in the city started to get together. We probably met a half dozen to eight times from probably February to July to put together an ordinance that oversees mobile food trucks in the city of Springfield, both on public and private property. The document before you tonight, I just want to highlight a handful of the items that are in there. The entity responsible for issuing all of the permits, public and private, will be the DPW. The ordinance will be added to our occupancy manual. Operations of food trucks on private property cannot be open later than 11:00. However, if there is a business on the property that closes earlier, they will have to close earlier as well. Trucks that are beyond private property have to comply with zoning rules and regulations, setbacks, locations, lighting, noise, parking, et cetera. Permits, when we issue them on private property, will be for six-month periods, and permits can be renewed. One of the items that we have in there is that on private property, there can be no more than two food trucks at a time. Trucks that will go on private property have to submit sketch plans to show what will be the impact to the property. As an example, if somebody is putting a food truck on a parcel that is going to be taking away parking spaces... In one instance, in East Forest Park last year, the food truck was taking up the two handicap parking spaces, so the lot became non-regulatory because it didn't have any handicap parking spaces. Private property owner will be required to sign the permit application. We've found out a number of times over the last few years when we've had problems on private property that a tenant was giving a food truck the approval, but the owner didn't know about it. So we are requiring that the owner signs up. We... In the ordinance, we talk about noise, trash, parking, as I mentioned. Permit costs on private property, the six-month permit will be $450. However, renewal is only $150. On public property right now, it's $225, but that is only for three months. And that is for also $150 for renewal. Permits have to be posted on the vehicle. Enforcement can be by either the DPW, police, fire, HHS code, based upon their area of expertise with regard to the food trucks. On public property, a fine will be issued to the truck owner. On private property, it will be issued to the landowner. As I mentioned, one of the big problems that we've had with the food trucks is they are on properties that the owner doesn't know about. So with the owner applying or being a signator on the application, they now have a vested interest in making sure that their vendors are compliant. Fines, all fines that we have listed in there will be $100 per incident, and we have also put in an appeals process into the legislation. The document is part of... And I want to make sure I do this one correctly. Chapter 279 is peddling and soliciting. It's basically selling anything in the city of Springfield outside of a brick-and-mortar store. We have modified certain items in the front end of the regulation, but the entire document... Or the... Excuse me, the entire piece for the mobile food trucks is 100% brand-new, and it is Section 8, Operation of Mobile Food Trucks. I believe, as Counselor Davila mentioned last week, we had a subcommittee meeting to discuss this. There were a few items that came up. One of the items was this year, there was a lot of small Italian ice vendors going around the city. And the other item that came up were vendors that were on property. And for a couple instances, for example, Family Dollar on Main Street, and I know that there's one up on State Street, where out on the sidewalk, businesses are out there selling cell phones, iPads, et cetera. The... There is a section already in there called transient vendors, so we would need to add a little bit language in there. What my request would be for this evening would be to pass Step 1. And if there are any options or... Excuse me, comments or items that need to be amended, I am happy to do it. With that, the... I am going to be away for December 1st, so I was going to recommend to the city clerk that the next time that this will be read for the 2nd would be December 15th. So therefore, between now and December 15th, we have a month or so for any of the comments, criticism, complaints, or additions that people would like to put into this ordinance, take out, et cetera. So that is the gist of what we are trying to propose. As I mentioned, there are no regulations right now with these food trucks. We got a lot of complaints this year, mostly about noise. Noise and trash were the two big complaints we got, and I know the police ordinance squad had received them as well. So at this point, I would be happy to open it up to any questions for the counselors with regard to items in the proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Signoli. Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, thank you for doing this exhaustive job. I think you were voluntold to do this, is that right?
I volunteer.
You were...
I was voluntold, yes.
Yes, yes, yes. I have to say, Chris, I do give you credit, my good sir. This is about 20 pages plus. I'm going to be honest, Chris, I do appreciate your work. I'm still digesting all this. I'm still digesting this whole package. And so I have a plethora of questions that are not going to be answered today. We do need to regulate this because they are becoming a problem throughout the city, the noise, the litter. And so we also don't want to interfere with anybody's ability to make a decent living and honest living. And so I want to make sure that we can air this out quite properly. I'd like to say, Chris, that after our meeting, the issue that I was having on the X with the food truck miraculously got solved. I'm hoping that they moved. So they're in a location that appears to be acceptable to me. I noticed that today while I went to pick up my medication. So, Chris, you know that I like to do my due diligence. I don't feel comfortable with everything quite yet. Mr. President, I did receive calls from my colleagues asking about this. I think there's more questions to answer at this point. Although I understand that what the director's asking, I think the wisest thing to do and the best thing to do to make sure that this gets done with the due diligence is to send it to committee. So I make a motion that we send this back to General Government.
Okay.
Thank you.
Motion to refer to committee made by Counselor Davila, seconded by Counselor Perez. Any other counselors? Counselor Whitfield?
Just wondering... Oh, sorry. If this passed First Step, does it automatically go to a committee?
Well, it's a really interesting question. So the rules say... Used to say that there was three steps. Now there's just two steps. So it doesn't automatically go to a committee if it passes First Step. It is common in between the passage of First Step and Second Step for a committee to call a meeting, but it's not mandated. The Committee on Enrollment and the Committee on Ordinances doesn't exist anymore under our new rules, so there's no...
What was that, Rule 19? What was the old rule?
The number of the rule? I don't recall what the number of the rule is, but it used to be that there was three steps, and there was supposed to be a Committee on Enrollment and a Committee on Ordinances, and that does not exist anymore. So to answer your question, it's customary that there be a meeting held in between the two, but it's not automatic.
But it's not automatic like it used to be?
Right.
Because I remember it used to go right to committee after First Step, but we eliminated that rule?
We did eliminate that rule because the Committee on Enrollment and the Committee on Ordinances never... It didn't exist. It was a relic from when there used to be a Board of Aldermen and a Common Council.
When it was two?
Right.
When it was a bicameral legislature, correct? Okay.
So not to give the full history lesson, but what used to happen is we would have a clerk with an ink stamp, and the Committee on Enrollment and the Committee on Ordinances, layman would walk around and he'd stamp it and say, okay, well, you just met and did this. But there was really no meeting. So for those reasons, that was eliminated, and there's nothing... There's just two steps now, not three, and there's nothing to stop a committee from holding a meeting in between Steps 1 and 2.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Any other counselors? Counselor Walsh?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to ask, Chris Signoli, Chris, a lot of work obviously has been done on this issue. We all appreciate it. Is there a timeline that you're concerned about for passage of this, if it did go to committee? I mean, what's the difference for you with Step 1 and committee?
Not really a concern for me. I want to have this all wrapped up. I would probably say I want to have it all wrapped up by like February of... February, March, because people will then start to come in for... Especially during the summer, people will start to come in for their spring permits. And I want to be able to give people enough notice between when it passes the council so that we can get in touch with all of these vendors, tell them they need to be permitted. The ones on the public way are fine because most of them are all permitted. It's the ones on private property that... We do have a list of them from HHS. I'm not under a huge time crunch for this. I knew it was going to take some time. So I know it is a lot of information that we did there. So I'm not in a huge rush for this.
Mr. President, can we take Steps 1 and 2 together after a committee meeting?
Unfortunately, no. The Charter doesn't allow us to do that.
Okay.
Unless there's an emergency, like snow or something. Counselor Delgado?
Chris, thank you for this... For the work on this, and I know it's substantive. And I, like my colleague, Counselor Davila, I want to dissect this a little bit more. You did say you had a list of, I guess, of food trucks. Did you have an amount? Of how many food trucks that was?
I can't remember off the top of my head the... HHS... Every food truck in the city has to have an approval from HHS to operate anywhere. And if they have propane or... Propane or something else, I'm trying to remember, they also need to have a permit from the Fire Department. I had that list. I think it is 80, 90, something like that, maybe even close to 100. I just don't remember the number.
No, I mean, I'd like to see us, you know... I'd like to see some more information go out to the public. I mean, 80 to 90 or 100 folks, that's impacting a lot of folks who I would hope are doing the right way. And I think you're doing the right thing by trying to regulate this and do it the right way. But I also want to make sure that, you know... Have you spoken to anybody that are food truck vendors at all?
Just a couple. Just a couple. When they were... When they heard about this, as we were going through some of the meetings this year, a lot of them were asking if we were going to be very, very restrictive. And I... My answer is, we're not being restrictive. We're trying to control it. The major complaints as I got were noise, trash, and adjacency to residential property. That was the big... I kind of skipped over that before. That was the big complaint of a food truck operating at 2:00 in the morning, either right next to a private property, private residential property. So the hours became an issue with that. But going out to all the vendors, we haven't done that.
Yeah. So I'd like, you know, I definitely support going to committee, but I'd love to see us make an honest effort to get out to many... As many of these folks as possible because I want to hear from them as well, right?
Yep, that's fine.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Delgado. Any other counselors?
Mr. President?
Counselor Press?
Yeah. I'm also supporting going to committee because I read some of the pages, but I have some questions. So specifically geared to the landlord application. So I need to understand that. So I'll be supporting voting to go back to the committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Press. Counselor Santanella?
Yeah. My question is, is there a cap on any of these? Have we put a cap on these yet? My concern is the restaurant industry itself.
There is no cap on the number of food trucks in the city at this time, and we are not proposing one as part of this regulation.
Okay. Have you heard from the restaurant industry at all? As it would oppose... As it would... You know what I'm saying?
Yep. No, lately, I have not heard from the restaurant industry. A number of years ago, when we first started the first on-street regulation, the major complaint we did receive from the business industry was, these entities do not pay city taxes. So they, especially operating on private property, can operate as a large business on a private property and do not have to pay city of Springfield real estate taxes for their business. So that was the complaint at that time. We are not trying to recoup that. We are trying to regulate at this point. But that was a couple, three years, or probably even more, when we first started, especially downtown. We then added into that regulation that they couldn't be within X amount of feet, and I know it's in my paperwork here. They can't be within X amount of feet of an existing brick-and-mortar restaurant for that particular reason, number one, so they're not taking away business from somebody else. And they have to be located in certain areas of the city that we designated. So there was a little bit of control, but the big complaint from the businesses were these entities do not pay city income tax or city tax, property tax. So they wanted to make sure that they were controlled as much as the private businesses were.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other counselors? Okay, there is a motion to refer this matter to committee. There's been motion made and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
On the motion, Counselor Kern?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen and Goban absent. Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown?
Yes.
Counselor Brown? Away, Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown. Counselor Whitfield?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santanella?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes. More insufficient? Matter is referred to committee. Counselor Davila, did you already have a committee meeting on this in General Government?
I did, Mr. President.
Refer this to the General Government Committee.
Thank you, counselors.
Thank you. Okay, Madam Clerk, last item?
Item number 16 is amending Chapter 275 to include new Article 5.
Counselor Kern?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a meeting in Health and Human Services this afternoon. It was a really informative meeting. We had a... As a witness, Dr. Charles White, he's a chair at the Yukon School Pharmacy in Storrs, Connecticut, and he is a national advocate who's appeared on Good Morning America, Today Show, Dr. Oz Show, and national publications, educating the general public about the dangers of this new drug, new drug, Kratom. Kratom has been around for a while as a leaf form, but recently, it's being synthesized. And it's being synthesized under a name called 7OH. And the 7OH mimics the response... And the 7OH mimics the response that individuals feel from either morphine or heroin, and his point is that this is what you would consider a light heroin and could usher in a fourth wave of overdoses, because right now, it's not being regulated, it's being sold in our gas stations, convenience stores, and its nickname is gas station heroin. Currently, it's been banned in seven states, including Vermont and Rhode Island, and I became aware of it through an article in the Sunday Republican by investigative journalists, and so being the fact that it is so dangerous and that the city council can move quickly and nimbly, I requested the Law Department draft an ordinance banning the sale of the synthetic 7OH, Kratom, and for the reasons that it's not FDA-approved, you can't get a prescription for it, from it, for a doctor, and that you can't really have an unregulated substance being sold to 10, 12, 13, 14-year-old kids that could lead to heroin addiction. After the hearing, we have discovered that there is a, a market or even a need by some responsible users of the leaf form, but the synthetic gas station heroin is what we are trying to target and ban here in the city of Springfield. That is why I'm going to ask to continue this to a further committee hearing for Health and Human Services, so the Law Department can catch up with today's testimony and change the ordinance before us. It's going to take two votes, but I encourage my colleagues here to watch today's hearing. It was really one of the most informative subcommittee hearings. I heard from the expert, and his diligence in trying to ban this across the country is, is necessary as we really have to get ahead of what he calls the fourth wave of heroin overdoses. So I will make a motion to continue this to a committee hearing in Health and Human Services, so the Law Department can come up with a final draft, and hopefully, we can get two votes of this before the end of this year's session, and hopefully, as we educate all of ourselves on the dangers of Kratom, we can ban this from the city of Springfield, because, you know, if you're selling gas station heroin, something that could lead to overdoses, I really feel like you shouldn't be selling gasoline in the city of Springfield, so. And brings up a larger question of what is being sold here at these gas stations here in the city of Springfield that we really have to look at. So if we could, I'll make a motion on the floor to move this to a further hearing in the Health and Human Services Committee, if there is a second.
Motion made, seconded by Counselor Walsh. There's some other counselors who want to be heard in the queue. Thank you, Counselor Kern. Madam Clerk, could you please recognize Counselor Allen, who's joined us?
Counselor Allen.
Mr. President, I'd just like to thank Counselor Kern for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, Counselor Walsh. Did you get that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Okay. Any counselors on the matter or the motion? Okay, Counselor Click Bruce.
Thank you, Counselor President. I'd like to thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. We did call earlier today to provide what was going on, the order of this, and good work, Counselor Kern, and the support of this board.
Thank you, Counselor Click Bruce. Counselor Perez?
Yes, I just want to thank Commissioner Helen Colton and the legal team department, as well as my colleague, Counselor Kern. It was a very, very informative meeting, and it was a lot of eye-opening, specifically with the issue that has been presented. I know that a lot of constituents have sent letters not to eliminate the crampton, but the issue is not the crampton itself, it's the additives that they have. So thank you, my colleague, Kern, for this very informative meeting that we had today. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Perez. Counselor Whitfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wasn't able to make the meeting. Counselor Kern, thanks for calling me to see if I could, because I know it's a very important topic. I will be watching the subcommittee meeting, because based on what I'm hearing right now in this room, I'm very concerned, so thank you for bringing it to our attention. I've never heard of it before, so you have created awareness with a lot of us here, and hopefully, we can create more awareness in the community. But it's issues like these that some people just don't know about, and it only takes one person to create awareness, so thanks for being that person.
Thank you, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Santinello?
Yeah, I just want to say, thank you, Sean, for bringing this before my committee. If you study the numbers on fentanyl and heroin overdoses in the city of Springfield, we have two overdoses from fentanyl and heroin every week. That's 100 lives lost every week, and I want to thank you because you probably saved some lives with this legislation. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Santinello. Any other counselors? Okay, there's been a motion to continue, Counselor Kern, and that would be continued until December 1st. That's our next regular meeting. Is that okay? Okay. Counselor Whitfield, yes, anything? Okay, Madam Clerk, if you could please call the roll on the motion to committee.
On the motion...
Motion to continue, motion to continue.
On the motion to continue, Counselor Kern.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Govan, absent, Counselor Walsh. Yes, Counselor Edwards.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Davila.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Brown.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Delgado.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Santinello.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Click Bruce.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Perez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton.
Yes, more insufficient, item is continued. Any more business, Madam Clerk?
There is not.
Okay, council will be adjourned. Our next meeting, our next hearings meeting is a week from tonight, the 24th, before Thanksgiving. Counselors, I do want to remind everyone that there is a special meeting on setting the tax rate, scheduled for the 24th. That meeting's scheduled for 5:00 p.m. If for some reason, we're not able to address it that night, I have scheduled a second meeting for Tuesday, the 25th, at 5:00 p.m. as well, to address that. Hope everyone has a wonderful week. Thank you.